Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 4th, 2024 meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. I've got to ask everyone to please take a moment and silence their cellphones, and please note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. I'd like to start by introducing members of the board, starting at the board's far right or the audience's left. It's Jerry Patamis. He is an associate member. Moving to the audience's right is Frank Duffy. He's a full-voting member. Next is Mark Fineran. He is a full-voting member. My name is James Morris. I'm a full-voting member, currently serving as chair. And we have Suzanne Murphy, who is a full-voting member and serving as clerk. Our associate member, Tony Perucci, is not here this evening, and our vice chairman, Scott Peterson, is unable to join us this evening. We're also joined this evening by Noreen Stockman, the zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, who is our recording secretary. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes, as well as the town zoning bylaws, in reviewing and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicant and to follow to allow for a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comment should be directed only at the project. We would ask you to please refrain from making personal or derogatory statements. Comments can include an opinion, in favor or opposition, or to ask a question about the project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair, should come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. Please speak into the microphone. It does not amplify your voice, but is provided for the benefit of FCTV viewers. The board may continue the hearing to a future date in time. Otherwise, when the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented to make a decision, the hearing will be closed. After a hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. The board will then discuss the project, the proposal amongst themselves, make a motion to approve or deny the application. The motion will then be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. The affirmative vote of four members, a supermajority, is required for the approval of special permits, variances, or appeals. A split vote, three to two, is a failure to carry and would result in a denial. Any Zoning Board of Appeals decision may be appealed, as provided for in Mass. General Law Chapter 48, Section 7. Two quick announcements before we get going, at the request of the folks at FCTV. Due to Comcast channel lineup changes effective immediately, FCTV Government Channel 15 is moving to Channel 9. For additional viewing options, please go to www.fctv.org. I see this evening we have a lot of public interest, and it seats almost at full capacity. There is an overflow room that has audiovisual TV down the hall. It's down at the end of the hall on the right, so for folks who may be standing or looking for a place to sit, there is a place that you'll be able to watch if you need to come to make a public comment. Just please come down the hall and...
Couple of chairs there, too.
In the meantime, there are a few chairs left. We just asked that the entrance not be blocked.
Chair up front for you.
The first thing on the agenda this evening is public comment. This public comment is reserved for any project that is not specifically on tonight's agenda. Does any member of the public wish to make a public comment for something that is not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to continuations. I'm going to take 09223 Kim out of order. We have a request for a continuance on this.
I move a continuance.
I'll second that.
Do we have a date in mind, Noreen?
February 29th.
February...oh, it's on the form. My apologies. February 29th. Is that a motion to continue to February 29th?
Yes, yes, yes. Who are the voting members?
And, yes, just for the purpose of the record this evening, since we have two members missing, I'll be pointing Mr. Patamis for all hearings. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Continue to February 29th. We have a request for continuance in the file. If I could inquire from the folks in the audience, it's always our goal to get as many people out of here as possible, so you can get back to see The Bachelor tonight. May I inquire, are most people here this evening pursuant to Falmouth Resort Owners, 350 Quaker Road? If I could just have a show of hands about how many people are here to...all right. Seeing that, is the board to take that one out of order?
Make a motion, and we take that one out of order.
So we'll take up 08423. Falmouth Resort Owners LLC, 350 Quaker Road, North Falmouth. Modification of an existing special permit to construct four duplex structures over the existing tennis courts and convert a portion of an existing office building to an additional unit. And again, Mr. Patamis, you'll be a voting member on this this evening. You were present at the first hearing, correct?
Yes.
Since the continuation, I would note that there was a letter that was submitted on December 26th from the Butters' attorneys. Mr. Clower, have you seen that letter?
I have, yes. Attorney McCormick was kind enough to include me in that distribution.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Kevin Clower, attorney here in town. I represent the applicant, Falmouth Resort Owner LLC, being the owner of the Seacrest property located at 350 Quaker Road. I'm joined tonight by Clark Gwynne, who is the general manager of Seacrest, as well as Romy Bocchewani, who is the head of asset management for Herschel Hospitality. Also here tonight is Greg Saruni, in from ResCom Architecture. Our engineer, Tim Santos, could not join us this evening. As was discussed at our last hearing, we're seeking to alter the existing developed property and to modify the existing special permits. It's currently operated as a 253-room hotel with associated restaurant and function space. We're proposing four duplex-style buildings at the northern end of the parking lot, an alteration of a portion of the existing building into additional unit for a total of nine new units. As has been noted, this project requires multiple levels of approval, site plan review from the planning board, order of conditions from conservation, as well as a modification of the existing special permits from this board. To date, we've received the site plan review, approval, as well as the order of conditions. I believe the board should have both of those in the file. While we did begin this hearing about two months ago, I'd like to spend some time, and there have been some changes to the plans, so I'd like to take a few moments to review. It is a 21-acre site, split zone between Business 3 and Residential B, both of which allow for commercial accommodations by a special permit. Proposed units are in the location of an existing developed area, tennis courts, and the proposal results in a net reduction of over 6,000 square feet of impervious surface, even with the proposed buildings. As proposed, there's no change to the existing parking areas. The new buildings are flood zone compliant, other to be elevated with parking underneath, and there's no change to existing traffic flow or site design, which is outside of this area of development. Proposed law coverage by structures is 14.5%, well below the 20% allowed by Wright, and the law coverage by structures paving and parking is 35.3%, also below the 40% allowed. The existing special permits allow for up to 266 units. The current bylaw actually allows for potentially as many as 339 units. There are 253 presently. Proposal will result in 262 units, which is still less than the number of units that's currently allowed. With all uses, existing and proposed, there's a required parking of 362 spaces. We provided 373 on-site, including 13 handicap. We're seeking to modify the existing special permits under 240-10.2A, 246.2B, and there's actually, as noted by Attorney McCormick, it should be 6.6B, but I'll touch on that in a few moments. It's the same uses as currently being made. It's an improvement to the existing landscaping, and as noted, it's a reduction of impervious surface of over 6,000 square feet. We're well aware of the concerns expressed by our Butters, and we've worked to address those concerns. Following our initial meeting, we revised the plans, increasing proposed landscaping and buffering, to specify and reduce lighting in the rear, and new plans were submitted to the boards this week, last week, relative to changes to the proposed structures. Relative to the landscape plan, conservation did not require mitigation planting, since this is a net reduction. However, we had originally proposed some landscaping, which has been augmented substantially by some updated plans. Now provides substantially more plantings, including dark American arborvitae, which is requested by both the Butters and the planning board. Those are proposed to be planted between six to eight feet in height at the time of planting, and they have a growth rate of eight to 10 inches per year. The lighting plan, we did change proposed lighting types. The lighting at the rear, next to the egress, is to be on timers. Otherwise, it's mainly reliant on railing lights. That was noted at our last hearing, but it's worth just showing again, because it's really So those are the railing lightings that would be used on the rear stairs. Those lightings are unobtrusive and small. All lighting is downcast, and it is dark sky compliant. Most recently, we did submit updated building plans to significantly reduce and remove decks that were cited as a cause for concern relative to noise and light by some of the Butters. As originally proposed, the rear of the building had a second-floor deck, which was 16 feet by five feet. It's a coffee nook deck on the second floor, and a larger deck on the third floor of 16 by nine. As revised, there is no third-floor deck, second-floor deck, and the first floor has only that remaining coffee nook, which is 15 by five at that point. The third-floor decks are eliminated from the rear of the building. The smaller, covered coffee nook deck is to remain. As to noise, these decks, the ones that remain, are relatively small and intended for relaxation, not for congregation. There's no proposed communal areas in the rear yards. None are intended or would be allowed, either under ConCon regulations, and this board could certainly condition that as such. Further, while not part of this application, the applicant has agreed to remove the existing fire pit at the rear of the cottage, which some of the neighbors have cited as a concern. Management has been working to address concerns, including regional to Butters. As we've talked about, this property is on a DEP groundwater permit with treatment facility on-site. That facility has the capacity to address the additional units. Questions arose at the first hearing relative to the history of permitting. There are a number of existing special permits, as I've discussed. I'd like to take a moment to go through those. Decision 2139, issued in 1968, allowed for the relocation of 16 rental units on the site. 2384, issued in 1972, granted permission to demolish and rebuild 32 existing hotel rooms and to construct 54 new hotel rooms. Decision number 109-82, issued in 1982, added 32 new hotel rooms to the existing 234, and also granted permission for the treatment plan. There was a special permit in 1991, which allowed for reconstruction of damage to the buildings post Hurricane Bob, as well as a special permit in 1993 that allowed for a new wastewater plant. So as noted, it's currently permitted for 266 rooms pursuant to that 1982 special permit. There are only 253 rooms at present. I did receive the correspondence from Attorney McCormick, while raising some interesting points, one of which I do believe is valid. I think it misses generally the point of our application. The relief that we're seeking is not multifamily housing, rather it's commercial accommodations. Typically, when altering an existing special permit, we request permission pursuant to 240-10.2A. Existing permits allow for commercial accommodations, which is a use allowed by special permit within both the Business 3 and the Residential B zoning district. Where Attorney McCormick is correct, the application should have included relief under 6.6B, which is the special permit allowance for commercial accommodations in a residential district. I'd be happy to amend the application as such. Otherwise, I believe it's a misunderstanding of what is being sought. We're not requesting multiple residences on-site. We're requesting a modification of an existing special permit for increased commercial accommodations. The applicant seeking to continue to improve and reinvest in the property, to be a good neighbor and to be a good corporate citizen. They're working hard to adhere and address the neighbor concerns, and has been considerable effort to do so in revising lighting, landscaping, and architectural plans to this point. I believe that this application meets the requirements for approval. I'd be happy to address any questions that the board might have at this time.
Questions from the board, and start with you, Jerry.
No questions at this time.
Right.
Mr. Clower, when you were here the last time, I asked you if you had a copy or could find the original special permit for this property. We note that much of this property is in the residential zone of B, our district, where commercial accommodations are permitted by special permit. Now, you have, or there are on file, five special permits, which appear to me to be amendments of perhaps an original special permit, because they all refer to existing buildings. So clearly, something was there before that 1968...what is it, 1968 special permit?
I would...really, I think it's important to find out how this property got built in the first place and what conditions were put on it when it was built. So, you can't find the special permit? I have worked with the zoning board staff, and I've also scoured the registry of deeds. The 1968 special permit allowed for the relocation of 16 rental units onto the site. Each subsequent special permit has subsequently...each subsequent special permit has added on to what's been allowed there. So the 1972 allowed for up to 32 hotel rooms to be raised and rebuilt, and 54 new ones constructed. 1982 noted that there were 234 existing rooms, and they're applying for 32 new ones. So there's no one definitive special permit that says commercial accommodations are allowed, but there's a series of special permits that note commercial accommodations and allow for commercial accommodations, and allow for an increased use in the commercial accommodations.
Well, I noticed that that's basically correct, but somewhere along the line, this property got started, and I think it probably required a special permit, because the information I have off the property record card was that it is built during a period of time when there was a zoning bylaw in the town of Falmouth. And, you know, I would...under Chapter 48, Section 11, if you have a special permit that's not recorded in the registry of deeds or filed in the town clerk's office, it's not valid. So I'm wondering how this place...what authority was used to build this place in the first place? And that leads me to, I'd say, frankly, some...I'm not very enthusiastic about amending a special permit that we can't find or see.
So I don't think the special permit, like you're referring to, exists, Mr. Duffy, because each permit has allowed for an increase. So originally, it was 16 rental units, and then there was a notation that it was being amended further. That original special permit doesn't refer to commercial accommodations prior to that point?
Well, none of the special permits that we have looked at refer to an original special permit either by number or by date, or give any details about the property, which I find kind of unusual, but it's just my concern.
Understood. I think, but I think that the permits that we do have on file that have been submitted are the permits that you're looking for. They don't specifically state what your...the language that you'd like to see, but they acknowledge and allow for commercial accommodations.
They do. I agree. I agree with that. But I'm just wondering if at some point, I don't know whether this is how it happened, but if there was a special permit originally allowing the place to be developed in the first place and any conditions on it, I think we'd like to see it if we could. And you've told us you've looked at the registry. You've looked around and can't find it, and I guess we have to accept that.
So I did reach out to Ashley at the zoning board. She's given me what she had on file. We've done a title examination on this property going back to 1950s. The original rental units were put there in 1968. I haven't found anything noting an additional special permit beyond the five that we've submitted to the board.
Well, Ashley also confirmed that. Thank you.
Mr. Fineran?
The application raised a lot of questions in my mind, and after Frank asked the original question regarding the special permits, I looked into it and came up short. Some of these things you've addressed, but, I mean, the property use is listed as multifamily housing, four units on page two of the application. Do you maintain that's the current use, or you're proposing to change the use? If not, can you...
Could you direct me to where it says multifamily?
Sure, I read that on the application.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Multifamily housing, four units.
Yeah, so that's kind of confusing.
So I, quite honestly, I think that is an error on my part. I'd be happy to...because the use is commercial accommodations. I don't think there's any question that the existing and proposed use is commercial accommodations. So I'd be, as I noted, I'd be happy to revise my application anyways to include 6.6B, and I can correct that.
Okay, well, obviously, it didn't fit. And then you...and you addressed this, but you also say you're applying under 240-10-2A and 240-62B. So that was also...
Yeah, 6.2B refers to commercial accommodations being allowed as a special permit use within the Business 3 zoning district. We can amend that to include 6.6B, which would also include the residential district. And then 10.2A, we have historically used that as part of our application when we've been amending existing special permits.
Okay, so you can take care of that, then. And then you maintain that there's five special permits, one in 68, 72, 88, and 91 and 93? And are there any other special permits? There seems to be something missing, isn't there?
No, there are no other special permits on record, nor does the zoning board have any record of it, any of the special permits.
All right. And on the application, you represent that it's a 253-unit resort permitted for 266?
Mm-hmm.
And then in the paragraph, you describe it as 263. So there's...
So there are 253 existing units. We have...I think in our application, we included a breakdown of units by building, which totals up to 253. And if you don't have that, I'd be happy to submit it.
Yeah, I'm referring to when you describe it. There are presently 263 rooms, so there's some more math that's seemingly incorrect.
As I've noted before, if I could do math, I'd be a doctor right now. It's not my strong suit. So to the extent that there's an error there, we can certainly correct that.
Yeah, there, well, there is. Sometimes math is my strong suit. Let me see, there's quite a lot here. Well, based on the five special permits submitted with this application, and the last special permit, 10982, it seems to me, and again, you know, maybe my math's wrong this time, but I came up with 118 rooms. How do you maintain there are now over, you know, how is it that there's now over 253 rooms?
So I actually have a copy of correspondence submitted from the planning board to the zoning board in 1982 as part of that application, which notes the existing 234 rental units at the property, and they're applying for 32 more. I'd be happy to submit a copy of that letter.
Okay, we're gonna need all this stuff. The application...I'm sorry, I got a lot here. The application does not include any special permits for the subject property between 82 and 92. The 92 special permit references condominiums on the subject property. When were the condos included in the property?
So this history...this property has a pretty interesting history. It was...
Sketchy would be more like it.
So it was interval ownership at various points. Certain units were, however, there's always been a commercial accommodation aspect of it. All units are owned by the same entity and have been for quite some time.
How...that doesn't seem to make any sense to me. Okay, and how are the condominiums included, and by what modification of what special permit?
So the condominiums were part of the commercial accommodations. So the units were part of the commercial accommodations. They're all owned under the same entity now, and have been, again, for quite some time. As noted, in 1982, they were considered 234 existing commercial accommodation units. 32 were added at that time, bringing the total permit at 266.
Were those 32 condominiums?
They were. The application...the special permit, I believe, refers to them as commercial accommodation units. I'd have to double-check, though.
I thought it was...I mean, there's so much here to put, you know, and I mean, we obviously need the proper documentation for we can, you know, even pretend to go further. How many condos are there now?
There...I can give you a copy of the deed, which includes how they were conveyed. They're still conveyed as various units. They're all held under one ownership group, have been for the past 30-some-odd years.
So you can provide us with that?
Mm-hmm.
So they're not deeded as condominiums?
So it's no different than deeding a parcel of land. The ownership is all held under one entity. There are still condominium units, though they're not treated that way. They're not used for residential purposes, because we have special permits noting that it's commercial accommodations.
But...
And to alter that special permit would require coming back to the board.
But if you're calling these things condominiums, how are they being taxed?
I'm not calling them condominiums. The property's taxed as one site with various buildings. Each building has...there's seven buildings on...eight buildings on-site. Each building has a building assessment, and there's an overall property valuation.
Well, I thought you said earlier that there still some are maintained as condominiums.
It's...
Very confusing. You have to admit.
No, it is. It is. They are assessed as one property. There's one...just if you have a detached garage and a house on your property, you'll have a building valuation for the house, a building valuation for the garage, and then you'll have the real property valuation. Similar here, you have a real property valuation for the actual land, and you have building valuation for each buildings.
And this condominium question still confuses me. I almost think that I should have gone to the assessors and maybe gotten some information that way. I'm still kind of curious. It seems like a question of having your cake and eating it, too.
If it was truly a matter of concern for the board, there was a deregistration process for condos that can be undertaken?
Well, I think that would be necessary, and documentation would needed...would need to be provided to us, so we make sure that...because this thing's sketchy from the get-go. I mean, if we're gonna do anything, I mean, we gotta clean this all up first before we move on, and that requires some documentation from you, and, you know, and when can you get that to us?
Well, I've been asked for it tonight. I can turn around copies of the existing deeds very quickly. I can provide you with the revised application very quickly.
Well, let me...if you don't mind me interrupt, I'm sorry. Let me get through my stuff, and then we'll get into that. And here comes some of your favorite mathematics and gazinners, if you prefer. In the application, it states, based on the size of this lot and the relative amount of square footage in B3 and RB districts, it says up to 332 commercial units, commercial accommodations could be allowed. I'm gonna need some math on that.
Sure.
It doesn't match what I thought I was doing.
So I actually got some updated information today from the engineer, because our original calculations were based on the...
So that is...that 332 number is incorrect?
It's 339.
339, rather, excuse me.
So I asked Tim to break down...Tim Santos to break down the square footage in the B3 zoning district and the square footage in the Residential B zoning district of...I can print this...I'd be happy to submit a copy of this calculations to the board as well, but it breaks down how many units are allowed per square foot in both the B3 and the Residential B district.
You're gonna have to give me a second here, because it doesn't seem to match with mine, but I'm not saying that...what do you got there? 152040? What's the other number? 768, 743? Well, I did the total, and I came out with a completely different number. This is not... This is nine twenty-seven eighty-three, and I did, obviously, forty-three thousand five sixty per acre times twenty-one point six, and I came up with nine hundred and forty-eight ninety-six. So I think if you can do the, you're gonna have to present that math to us in a better fashion also, you know, before we can, in my mind, anyway, go much further.
And I mean, when, I fully expect we'll have a continuation on this. Our engineer should be available for the next hearing. He can walk you through how we came, how we came to those numbers, the exact square footage of each district, and I'd be happy to walk you through what's allowed.
Well, it's a total, I mean, you know, the, that's, that's a nice number, but I mean, it all comes up to the total, and I say, as I say, you're off by a good twenty thousand square feet if you, you know, use twenty-one point six, and obviously, the sound number of, an acre being forty-three five sixty, so there's, again, it's, I'm just gonna need to see it. I mean, I'm just kind of that way. I mean, I'm a stickler for math and numbers and math tricks and jokes and my gazetas and all that, and it's, it's not complete here, you know, and there are a few mistakes on your application, which...
We can correct those.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you really need to give us a new application, just, just to satisfy me with the numbers.
I'm happy to do so.
All right. And the proposed buildings are accessory structures based on two forty-eleven point five B. The maximum height is twenty-two feet, and you can amend it up to twenty-five, as they did with the sewers plant in nineteen ninety-two. How do you extrapolate that out into thirty-five feet as their design?
Because they're not accessory structures. They're part of the primary use of the site, which is commercial accommodations. The water treatment plant is an accessory structure to that use, but the primary use here is structures for commercial accommodations.
I mean, and I spent a lot of time going through this, and you know how difficult it is, and I'm not saying that I am not incorrect. I am saying that your information is incomplete, and it needs to be straightened out. And, you know, I mean, we just require that documentation, and now I'll ask you, you know, when can we get those answers? How soon and, you know, I mean, I'm looking for a, a date specific that fits into your schedule or whatever, but as I say, we're looking at a continuation here, for sure.
Most of this information, I think, we can get to you very quickly.
Well, I mean, I honestly, just for the sake of these people here, I think, you know, we should just get to it, hammer it out, and pick a date.
So, I mean, I think we, I think we're probably premature to pick a continuation date at this point, but I do agree that we're looking at one.
Well, I mean, what date do we have, and then you can tell us whether that fits into your...
I'll make it work, is the short answer, just not school vacation week.
As we've established, I mean, this, this isn't complete. I mean, from the application being wrong right down there, and I'm not saying that it can't be cleaned up, so what would be the...
Something like that we could have to you and, you know, tomorrow.
Well, when can we continue to? Could we?
Do you have other board questions?
Yes.
Yeah, well, then, that's gonna be a question, anyway. All right, I'm done for the moment.
Attorney Klow, you testified that this is a commercial accommodation, not multifamily residences. How many other commercial accommodations on-site have dedicated parking garages?
Well, there's no other commercial accommodations on-site that have, that are elevated to meet floods-on standards.
Okay. How many timeshare units or commercial accommodations have multiple bedrooms, cooking facilities, and living rooms and dedicated decks?
So this is a suite style. I mean, that's the whole point, they're trying to create a suite-style accommodation, something that we really don't have here in town. It's something I run into on a personal level on a regular basis. I have four kids. I can't get a regular hotel room, so you look for multiple, you look for a suite. This is a suite-style hotel room.
Is it gonna be the applicant's position that the condo or timeshare units have been in existence before nineteen eighty-three?
Yeah.
So by extension of that, then, these could become timeshare units?
There's no, there's no interest in making any of this timeshare units moving forward.
But it could go forward, going forward.
It could be conditioned not to.
Okay. I need to reread the section about whether this would be protected or an expanded use of what's protected.
But that's certainly something we could condition in the decision. I haven't spent, to be perfectly honest, I have not spent much time in the interval ownership section of the bylaw, because it's not something we can...
It's not something that comes up that often, no. It's, and I was, you know, I was, in looking at the previous decisions, when I said condos, I said, okay, they're probably talking about not true condos, but timeshares. It's a different form of condo fractional ownership. The testimony right now is that one hundred percent of the fractional ownership is now actually owned by the...
Falmouth Resort owner.
Nothing outstanding? Yeah, I, I've got some issues that Mr. Finerman has stolen my thunder on a lot of these issues, so...
I didn't mean to, boss.
No, it's quite all right. There are some, in terms of the use, then, I think some of this has been addressed, but I think, given what people leave a suite style, I think that a lot of the neighbors have some significant issues they've raised at the previous hearing and probably hear from tonight about noise, the amount of use, the intensity of use, congregation, and we have some very densely populated neighborhoods right across the way, so...
And those are all issues we've sought to address by modifying the plans in a number of ways.
I may have additional questions afterwards, but thank you. Suzanne?
I was gonna get on the conservation lane. Stormwater management, I saw on the conservation approval, you didn't go through DEP, just Thalmuth.
So we have to go through DEP for, for the wastewater. We only had to go, because we're disturbing less than an acre of new land.
And don't we need information from DEP for stormwater? A letter?
I think that our engineering department has handled that through planning board. So DEP gets involved if you're disturbing more than, a new area, a new disturbance of more than an acre.
And the other thing I saw in the conservation decision, herbicides are okay, pesticides are okay, fertilize is okay. I was quite taken back, like quite taken back.
So I would note that conservation approved this because it is a significant reduction in impervious surface, which they see as a net benefit. I don't know that there's any intention to use any of those things. We'll have to, we will have to amend our application through conservation because we have changed some of our plantings, and we are changing a few other things.
That was gonna be my next question.
So that's certainly something we could address at that time.
I would think you want to, when I went over there, when we, you know, two months ago, it was trash everywhere, right, get right down into the pond, took a lot of pictures of it, and if I knew someone was coming to my house, I'd clean it up, and it wasn't. And I see the conservation has, in the condition, that it will be cleaned every day, every night. I think it says night, it might not be night. And I don't, I don't know how that's even gonna happen. I don't know.
Well, I can be, I believe that's an ongoing condition of their decision, and that would be subject to enforcement.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Any additional follow-up questions to the board before we go over to Terry?
Clarification, how long would deregistration take? That was a suggestion.
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah. It's not a process I've ever undertaken before, but there was a process by which it happened.
Just to follow up on a question that Mr. Finerman raised, this condominium, are all of the units, commercial accommodations, is any used as a residence?
No. Yeah, it just doesn't jive with mine. And that's not how I went about it. That's, yeah. Okay, that's, sorry. Excuse me again. Follow-up question? Yeah. Because I had two, but I, sorry, I got so loaded up on this, I forgot one of them, but you're proposing to add to sewage treatment plant that's been there for over thirty years. I know that you're not disturbing enough, you're actually, on one side of the ledger, you're doing us a favor, I mean, removing impervious surface, but has this thing been inspected by an engineer? Can we, how can we assume that it's operating properly and can take this additional flow? And I mean, I'm skeptical that after thirty years, whether it operates properly. I'm almost thinking that, you know, maybe something's in line, like, is it a fifty-three B for you to fund so we can give this septic sewage treatment plant a stamp of approval?
So I'd be happy to address that. It is managed by StanTech. They are the operator of the wastewater treatment facility. We could certainly have the StanTech representative come to the next hearing. The additional flow would be, would require approval by DEP, so this is not something we can do without DEP signing off on it. So there is a DEP portion of this process as well that we'll be going through.
Well, we, we would certainly, kind of surprise conservation, but I mean, I think, anyway, that we would also require the stamp of approval on that sewage treatment plant to, and maybe, you know, I don't, I don't know enough about it, and I'm gonna find out tomorrow, mind you, but it's, I'm sorry, it's just a question that...
No, it's a fair question.
I have, for sure.
No, it's a fair, it's a fair question. So this is not, as we've talked about in other hearings, you know, your approval, such that you may be, see fit to grant, is not a blanket approval. So we still need to go through whether it be Board of Health, which is not in this case, the Board of Health would defer to DEP, but we have to go through the DEP process. So just like you'd have to get approval for a new septic on a, on a house build, we'd need to get approval for the increased flow from DEP for the, for the new units.
Yeah, I mean, I, but just so long as, I mean, this thing gets a proper bill of health, for want of a better term, okay. Now is it proper to ask when the next, we can continue this, too?
Well, we're not trying to stifle anyone who may have come out to want to be weighed in tonight. So before we turn to our public comment, is there a date that we can make sure that we can get that out of the way?
February first.
Is that enough time?
Sorry, February first?
Yeah, I don't see why not.
So we're not gonna take a motion to continue just yet. Turn this over to public comment. Sir?
Hi, Chris Hall, Aker Toor. I'm a director.
I know you're tall, but nobody can hear you at home unless you get...
I'm Chris Hall, Aker Toor. I'm a director, but, and I can see exactly the site of this, and I think I've said this before to this board, I'm opposed to this. Just pursuant to the conversation that just happened at the sewage treatment plant, I wanted to bring your attention to this letter I received about a hearing with conservation next week about a project for the Seacrest Hotel, Falmouth Resort owner. Proposed project includes an emergency repair to existing sewage system terminating at the wastewater plant. Proposed work includes abandonment of two existing grease traps, the removal of existing structurally failed pumping chamber. So I think you can say quite clearly, not only is there a problem, but the Seacrest know about the problem.
Pardon the pun, but I guess I got a nose for this.
Anyway, there's a conservation hearing on the tenth, proposed for this, but I just wanted to...
Tenth of February?
Tenth of January.
Oh, January, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Interesting.
Good evening. My name is Sean McCormick. I'm an attorney for the Old Silver Beach Estate Homeowners Association. My office is at One Boston Place in Boston. I wanna respect everyone's time. I wanna be sort of laser-focused on my comments tonight. I think there's another fundamental problem with the application, which is the multiple principal structures on a single lot. I'm not seeing where that is authorized by the Falmouth zoning code. I probably spent more time in there than I want to admit, but I think...
That I spent more looking for the same thing.
But I, but I think that's a, I think that's a problem for the application, and I think it would be a problem for an approval, because I think that the thrust of zoning is that, you know, principal uses are generally confined to one building unless there's a sort of authorization otherwise. I don't see it here, and I, and I think that the probable, the probable theory, if I can surmise, is that, well, you're already non-conforming, and that this is an expansion of a non-conforming structure. And I'm, I'm just not sure that that works. Non-conforming structures can be expanded. New non-conforming structures cannot be authorized absent a variance. So, so, you know, trying to stretch this notion of, well, we're going to expand an already non-conforming structure to allow multiple new structures on a single lot in a residential district, I think it stretches it to the breaking point, and I think the answer is, if this is really the project that, that the applicant wants to go forward with, they should, they, they need to ask for a variance. And that's, that's really the point that I wanted to raise with the board. I'm sure that, that the other points that, that are going to come up, I think, are important to the decision-making the board needs to make, but I think other people are gonna be better able to express those than I am. I wanted to sort of stick to that legal issue that, that we had identified.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bruce Bagdusarian. I live at Seven Noset West, directly across the pond from where this project is proposed to be constructed. We've had a home there for forty years, and I'm here to oppose the project. I have a number of concerns, but my primary concern is the noise. We've heard about mitigation measures, they're gonna reduce the size of the decks. That doesn't solve the problem. When you have units that are open to the pond with sliders, even with a small deck, you can imagine how a three-bedroom suite is gonna produce a lot of noise. You're gonna have after-hours parties, after weddings, after reunions, there's gonna be gatherings. This is not a normal hotel room. These are three-bedroom units, so there are gonna be gatherings, there's gonna be noise, and when those sliders open, the sound is gonna be magnified across the water. Everyone near those units will hear them. We're directly across the pond. We enjoy our back deck. We have dinners there, we spend a lot of time there, we like to leave our windows open. I think there are a lot of us in the community that are very, very concerned about the project, and especially the sound. Another concern, if you were to approve this project, I think it's just gonna encourage the Seacrest to seek another project. They're already seeking to build on a lot where apparently, as I understand it, you should have one structure per lot. Now, there are probably nine structures on that lot. This'll create another four structures. You know, when does that stop? So I think we need to stop it now for the sake of those who are around the Seacrest. Another concern, are the views being affected and the wildlife? I mean, you've expressed concerns about the sewage treatment plant. We have similar concerns. You have thirty-five-foot-high duplexes that are gonna affect people's views. People walk to the beach across a bridge. Most people pause there because of the view. They look for the egrets. Their kids play, and they look for crabs, they fish. These buildings are gonna be built right there, they're gonna disrupt things, the construction will certainly disrupt the wildlife, and then the sound over time. The construction will certainly disrupt the wildlife, and then the sound over time. I'm concerned that will affect the wildlife, and it'll affect the view in a very serene little place that we all enjoy. I'll also mention traffic. I'm at the corner of Nossett and Quaker. Traffic on busy days snakes all the way beyond our house. And people have to cross the street to get to the beach. It's very dangerous. And you have people getting frustrated, taking rights and lefts and U-turns. It's not a great situation. This is only going to exacerbate that situation, and there's no traffic studied to my knowledge. So, and it has been mentioned at a prior meeting, there are 180 families that the Old Silver Beach Estates Homeowners Association represents. That's 180 taxpayers' families in this town. And so we request that our voices be heard and that this project be denied. And if you were to approve this project, it should not be approved with any sliders, any patios, any opportunity for sound to be emitted across that pond. Thank you.
I'm Nick Finnamore, 62 Santuat Road, part of the Old Silver Beach Homeowners Association Board. Just a few observations. I'm opposed to this project. Just some of the fundamental things that were incorrect in the application. Pretty enlightening. And I'd also say that in addition to the concerns about the noise and wildlife, the water treatment plant, the waste treatment plant, which we were discussing, is now non-functional. And that pond provides water into the bay. We fish there. Kids crab there. And it's long since been a concern that somehow the Seacrest's waste was affecting the pond. Can't say that that's for certain. But now, we stood here and we heard, we had a discussion about the waste treatment, only to then get a letter that it was actually non-functional. That was pretty amazing to me. It just goes, I think, to the credibility of the Seacrest application process here. I have a lot of neighbors and friends here today. I just would ask, has anybody been approached by this representative from the Seacrest?
Yeah.
Sir, everything goes with the-
Everything's got to come this way.
Okay. All right, sorry. And I don't know of anybody that's been approached, or certainly our board hasn't been approached. So I would just say, a comment that abutters have been approached, we haven't seen that. Thank you.
Just asking.
Sure, sir.
Sir, just one quick, just for my own edification, and I like to know everything plus. The 180 families, is that both sides of the road, the larger neighborhood?
Yes, so we have, we have homes to the north of Quaker Road and to the south.
Okay.
I'm just going to follow up one thing. Your attorney is here this evening, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Generally, it's just in the interest of time, I don't want to stifle anyone, but if someone is a member of the association, generally defer to their representative to make their comments.
Fair enough.
Anyone who wishes to submit written comments or opposition, feel free to send them into the zoning administrator. They will be, they are always read. Thank you, sir.
I think that that kind of stifled these people, and I'm not sure that's proper, because there might be an individual here that has something pertinent to add that might get lost in the translation.
Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on something that other than the, other than the issues that have been brought up by council and people who've spoken so far?
My name is Patricia Cohen. I'm at 7 Tonsit. I just want to say, in regards to what Frank Duffy was referring to, my father bought his property in 1945. We have been there for decades, and the Seacrest was there when he purchased his property. I don't know how many years prior to that it was there. There must be some information somewhere that supports the original building of that property. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Can I ask you, and actually, is there anyone here that might have a picture from circa 1945? Give us a foundation, because there's missing pieces here.
But that's not really even, we don't know if that's the critical date.
Right. Well, we could know what it was at 45.
Well, we know, for example, that it was built in 1930, in the '30s. So the farther back is more important than 45, I would say, but that's just my opinion.
Well, we only have a 68 now, and it's lacking.
We could look, we could look and see if we have any. Yeah.
That would be nice if anyone did.
Other comments? So we're looking at a continuation. I think February 1st is what has been, Jerry, you have a question?
Do we, I think it'd be appropriate to see if the attorney for the opponents, if it's convenient for that.
What's planning on?
Oh, okay, sorry.
Can I just add one more thing to the list, or maybe it's not proper, but one of the, something I learned from Frank a long time ago, I can't remember where it was, but I always kept it, and I'd have to paraphrase, but you said that anything that you do has to be in the code. I mean, because it's not there doesn't mean it can't be done, so I'd like to see the part of this code. And I searched where it says there can be nine primary buildings on a lot. I'm not saying that it doesn't say it somewhere, but in order for there to be somewhere in here, it has to say so. And I think that's the tutelage I got from you, Frank.
I would ask the same question. McCormick made the comment that we need a variance, and there's only one principal structure allowed on the lot in the business, in a BR district. So maybe if you have any comments on that?
So, we're looking at a continuation anyways. I'd rather not riff off the cuff. I do know that we have a number of sites around town where we have a number of principal structures.
We do, but if you'll bring that subject up when you come back, it'll be appreciated.
Yes, I will certainly address that. If I could just address a few, a few quick things. The treatment facility, the issue that's being rectified next week actually deals with the kitchen, not with the wastewater treatment itself. It's, the grease trap is related to the kitchen usage. There's been no overflow grease into the treatment. There was a concern over slider by, over the sliders by Mr. Bagdassarian. There are no sliders, as proposed. There was a doorway to the, to the small deck on the second, on the first floor, but there are no sliders. I'd just note there are no private view rights. There's no view easement over this section. And the comment about the traffic, I think, is disingenuous at best, because we have Old Silver Beach 200 feet further down the road, which generates more traffic than any of the beach, I'd say, on this side of Wellfleet. And to say that adding nine units is going to significantly impact the traffic in a meaningful way, I think, is a real stretch. And that actually came up in one of the 1980, I think it was 1982 decision. There was a concern over traffic expressed by some of the concerns, by some of the abutters. And the decision actually states that, you know, they said it has to be, it's almost certainly much more related to Old Silver than it would be to anything impacting that Seacrest.
Was it once called Shore Road, and then it changed to Curly Boulevard?
Yeah, I think it's Quaker Road at that point, at that section now. But the, all of the historical references refer to it as Shore Road. I think that's what it's referred to as the original plans that lay out that area.
Oh, because, I just, again, just curious facts and history or whatever. That didn't jive with current, you know?
All right, so the board is requesting some additional information. Applicants agreeable to the continuation as well as providing that information. Looking at a continuation of February 1st. Is there a motion to continue to February 1st?
I saw a move.
It's a second, Mr. Finneran, any discussion on the motion?
Same question as before, if it's applicable.
Oh, thank you, Jerry. Counsel, are you available that evening? February the 1st?
Thank you for asking. Yes, we'll be available.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. All those in favor to a continuation of February 1st, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. We continue to February 1st. Thank you very much. Thank you. Fun fact, Mr. McCormick is an old law school classmate of mine, so this was, happy reunion.
He looks much younger.
Now we're going to Sam Turner Road.
Yes, 54.
Are you pulling anything from down here?
While the audience is filling out, I'm going to take something out of open meeting. The minutes, people, we're going to be tabling the minutes of December 14th and 21. Has everyone had opportunity to review the minutes of November 30th and December the 7th?
Yes.
Are there any comments, corrections, additions?
I'm abstaining because I missed one of those meetings. I saw abstaining from all the votes.
So Jerry will be abstaining from the vote of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of November 30th and December the 7th?
Aye.
Give that to, it's a second, Mr. Finneran, discussion on the minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
Closed. November 30th and December 7th are approved.
Have a good evening, everyone. Watch the Bruins.
All right. Next up on-
Are we starting at the top now?
Yes. Next up under our continuations, we have 09623 Odell, 54 Sam Turner Road Hatchville, requesting a special permit to raise and rebuild the existing dwelling and detached garage.
Okay, I have Melissa Odell and Vincent Thomas Odell Jr., 177 Berrywood Drive, Severna Park, Maryland, applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240 102A, 240 11.4A, 1 in parentheses, aye, and 240 12-1 of the Code of Falmouth to raise and rebuild the existing dwelling and detached garage. The subject property is 54 Sam Turner Road Hatchville. And from boards, let's see what I have. Assessors, no objection. Fire Department, no issues. Health Department, the septic design is for four bedrooms. The plan shows a compliant four-bedroom primary and reserve area for the leaching field. Health doesn't have any issues with this proposal. Planning, no comment. Conservation, it might be still in front of them, I'm not quite sure yet, I might get to it. And I have engineering. Number one, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Williams Holloway is a private right-of-way in this area. Any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public rights away. Four, where this project falls in the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, we defer to the Commission for the Stormwater Management and Construction Erosion Controls. Five, this lot is located on Williams Holloway, but has, but has appears to be using a Sam Turner address. The town's GIS system indicates that both 54 Williams Holloway and 54 Sam Turner Road. We defer to the Board of Appeals, Falmouth Fire and Rescue, or the Building Department if this lot addressed, address should be changed to 54 Williams Holloway. Per DPW Engineering, we shall assign a number upon application for and prior to the issuance of a building permit. And note that 52, 56, 58, and 60 Sam Turner Road would be changed at the same time. This area has been discussed in the past. However, the Engineering Division has not been requested to correct the address. No comment there. They closed the conservation hearing on 12/20, and I do have something from them.
They issued orders of conditions.
Yeah, has it got conditions? Yeah, it does have conditions, okay. And it's long. And let's see. And that's what I have.
I believe there's numbers of letters in support.
And there are. There are five letters in support, none in opposition, correct? Yep. And that's what we have.
Yeah, for the applicant, good evening.
Aye. This was continued because of a staking question. And you represented to this board that our claims were incorrect and that the lot was properly staked. And I have some pictures here. This one was taken the first time when I went in, and it's where I said there was no lot corner. If you read this stake, it says lot line, not lot corner. And this is the one that was done afterwards, where there are two stakes here, there's one in front of it. And that one says lot corner. So in fact, it was not staked properly as this board represented to you. And secondly, the other corner, I walked and traversed that pond and had to stick my foot in the pond to get around that tree, just like you, and I looked everywhere, and there was no stake thrown around anyplace. And obviously have the proof to maintain that that lot corner was not proper. And I also maintain that there was no stake in the other property corner, and we require it, and we were correct, just to remove any doubt or argument from anybody's mind.
Is the board satisfied with the staking as of this time and for this hearing?
Yes, thank you. Now, yes.
So let's just proceed with the hearing, may we?
As the record straight.
For the record, we think that the staking as performed prior to the last scheduled hearing was entirely adequate, and if there were any minor errors in it, the continuation of the case was totally unnecessary. And now I'll proceed with the current presentation. Thank you.
I'm sorry, but we have applications, we have a staking policy, and it was staked incorrectly.
The board did continue the hearing. The board is satisfied this evening with the staking as, is there anyone on the board who's unsatisfied with the staking? Revised staking?
Not presently, but with the correction.
The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much. For the record, I'm Bob Ament. I'm a Falmouth attorney. I represent the applicants, the owners of the property, Vinnie Odell and Melissa Odell. The subject property has been in Mrs. Odell's ownership for over 50 years, and the house in question was mostly built in 1960, and the latest addition was completed in 1974. The aerial photograph that I have in front of you shows Crooked Pond, to orient you. This is Kuna Mesut Pond, and Deep Pond, Ballymead is over here, and this is Sam Turner Road. Williams Holloway Road comes off of it, and this is the Odell's property. I should say that Bunker just sat down. I did the surveying for this project, and his firm did the engineering. The architecture is done by Liz Katerpovik, who is here in the audience as well. This second aerial photo just gets you closer to the parcel on question. That's this right here. And finally, this closer one shows our locus and the existing house. It says 54 on it, just to respond to the Engineering Department's concern about the address. Our clients would prefer to keep the Sam Turner Road address. They think that the other neighbors who have a similar address agree. If you look in the town records and you Google Williams Holloway 54 or Sam Turner, you both come up. But this is something we would address with the Engineering Department to, so there should only be one address for these properties, and we agree with that. So the property is a non-conforming property. It's non-conforming in a couple of ways. The house is within 50 feet of the waters of Crooked Pond. And the other non-conformity is that the garage, which is located about here, it's mostly hidden by trees on this photo, is in the front yard. And of course, an accessory structure in the front yard requires a special permit. It's 105 feet back from the street. So those are the non-conformances. And with the house being as old as it is- And with the house being as old as it is, and with it virtually hanging over the pond when the water is high, the Odells want to build a new house. It's set back, will be set back a little further from the pond. Presently, the cesspool, which is in this area, will be moved so that it's along the street with the effluent pumped up a couple hundred feet to the new Title V system, a great improvement. I want to show you the house itself. And I think this is a good enough view. You can see all the pictures at once, and this is the house with the pond behind it, couple of sides of the house. This screen porch faces the water, another view of that. And the last four pictures are simply each side of the existing garage, which would also be replaced. This is the proposed site plan prepared by BSS Design. What I've shown in blue are the lines of wetlands. And you can see that wetlands surround this house location. This is, could well be the most environmentally sensitive house location that, you know, many of us have seen. It's got the pond, the existing house, which is shown here, actually extends again, as I said, it hangs over the water. And this is a vernal pool back here, other wetlands over here. The driveway goes down 30 feet from the street to get to the existing garage in the same location as the proposed garage, right here. And so we're going to install a new Title V septic system instead of the cesspool that's in a difficult location. We're gonna put the leaching field up here by the street. We're going to pave the existing driveway so that we can control runoff with a berm to keep the water out of the vernal pool, put it into a catch basin in front of the garage. Neither of the existing structures have control of stormwater runoff, that is, they have no gutters or downspouts. The new structures will introduce all the water into leaching catch basins. There'll be no increase in the number of rooms in the house, it'll stay a six-room house. There'll be no increase in the number of bedrooms in the house. The footprint of the house will be reduced from about 1,500 square feet to about 1,400 square feet. The total lot coverage by structures, even with a small increase in the size of the garage, the total increase in structures will be reduced to only 4.4%. As you know, 20% is allowable. Even with the pavement of the driveway, the lot coverage by paving, structures, and parking will only be 11.63%, whereas 40% is allowed. There'll be solar panels on the roof. Conservation Commission has approved this project. They'll be, with the house is being moved back about five and a half feet further away from the pond, as far as we can move it without being within 25 feet of the vernal pool. We wanted to keep that minimum separation. The property along the shore is within the state's Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program area, and the state has signed off on this project, issuing a letter, which you have a copy of, stating that there will be no taking of any protected species. So we don't think there are any adverse impacts at all from this project, that everything about it is an improvement. There's no objections we're aware of, and I guess you have in your letter some five letters, I believe they're all from close neighbors in support of what the Odells would like to do. Happy to answer your questions.
Questions in the board, start with you, Senator.
I don't have any right now that I can think of.
I have no questions.
The blue area at the top, is that a vernal pool as well?
Let me make sure I understand which area you're talking about. I mean, there's this blue line, and everything-
All the way at the top?
This area.
What's that?
I don't believe it's a vernal pool. Is that Tom?
For the record, my name is Tom Bunker. The wetlands were flagged by LEC Environmental Consultants, and they just identified it as a vegetated wetland, not a vernal pool. It's the actual vernal pool that is identified on the town website as a certified vernal pool, but this smaller area-
Just a wetland. Would it not be possible to move the house further up towards that wetland and have more respect for the vernal pool, or is-
I don't think it'll get the house any farther away from the vernal pool, moving it to the northwest.
That's really all I have of them, that it's staked out properly, and it's a good project to me.
Thank you. And the standard, of course, is, is the proposed structure substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformances, and it just isn't. It's an improvement.
Frank, questions?
No, thank you, it was a comprehensive presentation, I have no questions.
Jerry.
Agreed with Frank.
Public comment?
Good evening, I'm Jennifer Catton, I live at Crooked Pond Farm, 308 Hatchfield Road. My parents are abutters to this property. My family's lived at Crooked, around Crooked Pond for 100 years. My great uncle sold the property that we're talking about this evening to Melissa's father over 50 years ago. Melissa, Vinnie, and her family love Crooked Pond, they love the area. They've been taking very good care of the area this whole time. They're wonderful stewards of the property and the waters around it, and they're wonderful neighbors. We support this plan of theirs, and we hope you do too. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comment? Board discussion.
Need a motion to close?
Second.
Motion to close by Jerry, second by Frank, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. How would the board like to proceed?
Over with conditions.
I'll second. Findings.
Findings, let's see, it's zoning district AGAA, it's an overlay Great Pond. It is in partial migration, no flood zone. It's 1.35 acres. Existing is 4.47 with structure and 4.87 with complete, and proposed is 4.42 over 11.63. Hopefully, I've read the plans correctly, the garage, I think, is 21 feet, and the dwelling's 25. I hope, I often mess that up. It's a four-
Per plans.
Per plans. Per my magnifying glass, trying to do it. There were five letters in support. What else do we have? We have conservation.
Wildlife conditions.
Those are the conditions.
Yeah, conditions, yeah, I think that's all I have for findings.
One abutter testified in support of the project.
In support, yep.
Site is adequate for what is proposed, it is suitable, there'll be no impact on traffic, no impact on neighborhood visual character. Testimony is that existing cesspool is being removed, and a new Title V septic being put in. The non-conformities as to look, the proximity to the pond are being improved.
What state agency was it that approved this, that they said there was no-
Fish and Wildlife.
Fish and Wildlife.
Fish and Wildlife, that's a-
There's a letter in here.
So that's a finding?
Yes.
They also had some conditions, I think.
Yep, those are the conditions.
Well, the letter is a finding, actually.
Any other findings?
Could I, no? Good.
Since overall, the project is an improvement to, brings the property more in compliance with the zoning code. Conditions?
I would like a letter from engineering telling us what the address should be. He said there's been questions coming up in the past, he said he was gonna speak to engineering.
We'll comply with the decision of the building inspector, or-
So I think the issue particularly for them is there are various properties throughout town that have long time held particular addresses, but where the problem lies is that there's an emergency call.
Right.
And someone's responding, and if they can't find the home, it's creating an issue. So I think what engineering was stating was, you know, not that they're specifically going to make people change, but this is an opportune time to consider that.
For safety purposes, I guess.
Why don't we just condition it that we'll comply with, I can't recall the specific number in the engineering comments, but with terms of the fixing letters and numbers, defer to the building planning or whoever assigns the numbers.
Engineering.
Engineering. Comply with all conservation.
Yep.
Conditions.
Any town referrals?
Right, any, all, right. It looks like, I did look at the plan, and I did see, I don't know if we need to condition the mechanical room, I don't know if we need to make the doorway wider, I can't really tell on here how wide it is, so it doesn't turn into a bedroom? Do you see that on the plan?
I did, I'll just, I think we can just defer to the board of health to make sure about determination of bedrooms.
Okay.
The second floor of the garage is listed as furnished, so we should say it's not to be used as a dwelling.
Yep.
Good point.
Can I speak to that, Mr. Chairman?
We've closed, want to reopen the hearing?
See what he has to say. Motion to reopen.
I'll second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Me.
Thanks, I just want to assure you, we have no objection to that condition, that it not be used as a dwelling. A dwelling would mean that it would have cooking facilities and so on. It's intended as storage, as perhaps an office or an artist's studio. Whether somebody would ever sleep in it is, it doesn't make it a dwelling. And it, the septic system has four-bedroom capacity, which would count that if it was used as such, so anyway, no objection to that condition.
No, I meant dwelling, not other uses.
Say again?
I meant dwelling, not other uses, I'm not concerned with the other uses.
Before you go, because it's being a raise and reconstruct, buildings seem to be part of the stretch energy code compliant?
Whenever the building commissioner requires.
Add additional findings, testimony with solar panels and stretch energy code, which will be, that's an improvement. Yep, motion to close again, I'll make that motion, is there a second? Mr. Fineran, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're closed again. Any additional conditions? Garage is not to be a dwelling.
Can you think of anything?
Anything else, no?
Conditions from Fish and Wildlife?
If they have any, we can, yeah, we'll comply with all referrals.
We just, we did comply with any letters in the-
Oh, okay, so generic.
Kind of included, yeah.
Anything else?
Do you want work hours?
Standard work hours, yeah, that's fine.
Who's gonna bother?
Yeah. All those in favor of the approval of the conditions and findings, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's an approval, thank you very much. Next up, we have 09823 Lavoshko, 70 Philadelphia Street East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to remove a portion of the existing dwelling, remove front porch, and construct an attached garage addition with habitable space above exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures.
Okay, we have Michael and Carol Lavoshko.
Lavoshka.
Sorry.
Lavoshka, thank you.
It's okay, don't worry.
90 Charmark Circle in Middleborough, Mass. Applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 240-102A and 240-113A4, the code of Falmouth, to remove a portion of the existing dwelling. Sorry. Remove a portion of the existing dwelling, remove front porch, and construct an attached garage addition with habitable space above exceeding 20% lot coverage. The subject property is 70 Philadelphia Street East Falmouth. And let's see what we have from boards. The fire department has no issues. Health department has no issues, this property is on sewer. Planning has no issues. Concom has no comment. And we have engineering. Number one, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Philadelphia is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. Number two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission for the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property abutters or public rights away. Four, a drywall is proposed for the new roof, as we typically recommend. Five, the plans are not clear, we are assuming the thick dash line on the driveway represents the cobbled edging. This is the same line type and weight as the portions of the existing structure to be removed. Also, this does not appear to reflect the driveway in the current state. It is not, it does not appear there is an angled portion. If our assumptions are correct, and the driveway is configured as visible in the above aerial, the heavy dash lines represent cobble edging. There are no proposed alterations to the driveway, no driveway permit is required. If alterations are proposed, we reserve the right to review revised plans showing the proposed alterations more clearly, more clearly, to determine if a driveway permit is required. Six, erosion controls are not shown on the plan to protect abutting properties and the public right-of-way. Erosion controls across the front of the property and construction entrance should be added at a minimum. We recommend the following condition being included, construction of this project should follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. Document can be found in the engineering division's page of the town website. References to the Department of Public Works Engineering Division shall be replaced with the zoning board of appeals, who will be the permitting authority. That's engineering, and that's, and letters, let's see if I have, do I have letters in here?
I didn't see any.
That's what we have.
Good evening, where are the applicant?
Good evening, I'm Carly Tobias, I'm representing the Lavoshkas, Michael and Kara. I'm here because the applicant is seeking a special permit under the zoning bylaw of 240-10.2A and 240-11.3A to alter existing non-conforming structure. The lot is exceeding 20%. It's exceeding by 2.1, making the proposed lot coverage by structure, house addition shed to be 22.1. And that is why we are here. For the engineering notes, I did resubmit a new site plan, correcting the cobblestone and showing the proper location for that, and then having those notes also put in too at the end. And I didn't get any further comments from the engineer on, he said everything looked good in the town.
When did you submit the new one?
I submitted-
Yes.
A new one, he gave it to me 12/5/23. I don't have that date on me, but it was the Tuesday before your last zoning appeal. And then I continued that because I didn't have the lot, okay. I didn't have the lot staked out, so that's why I'm here tonight, because I didn't get that done, and we properly staked out the lot.
We're good, I have the right one.
Obviously, we're sticklers for that.
No, that's fine, that's why I continued it. Ashley was great in the office working with me too, she's, really was phenomenal, this was my first CBA in Falmouth, so she was a huge help.
She makes us look good, too.
You're very lucky.
She's awesome. So I'm here because the lot is exceeding 2.1. So I'm, I'm here because the lot is exceeding 2.1%. It's the largest lot on that street, and when you look at the other lots, uh, the Lavoshkas are actually very low compared to the other lots exceeding the lot coverage. Like I have, the largest one right now is 57, um, exceeding that. He's actually the second smallest, and he has the largest lot. He's trying to keep the character of his cottage. They don't, they're not tearing it down. There's three houses on that street that are tearing down, um, but he doesn't want to do that. He wants to keep the cottage and just get a bathroom downstairs, a garage, a master bedroom upstairs, and a small living area and a second bedroom.
Board questions? Jerry?
No. Look, good.
Frank?
No.
Mark?
No, as a matter of fact, I just, I love what they're doing. It's, and it's not pigish or whatever, for the want of a better word, but it's, it's, it's beautiful. And I mean, the deck in the back, the whole things, and the separation between them and the grandchildren and whatever's down, it's just a nice job.
Thank you.
The removal of the wood walkway, uh, that gonna get you out of the flood, uh, gets you out of the flood zone, correct?
That, yeah, so they're removing the, um, wood porch and the wood walkway ahead of Rins area.
Good decision.
That was just to take down the lot coverage, because they thought they had to go below that until I did the math of how much lot coverage the other houses were using. So, but they are gonna remove both of those.
Thank you. Suzanne?
No, this looks like a great project.
Thank you.
It's good.
Public comment? How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
Motion to close. Is there a second? Suzanne, all those in favor of closing, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing is closed, no more testimony would be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion, motion to approve of the conditions.
Motion to approve of the conditions. Suzanne, second by Mr. Fennerin. Findings?
Findings, uh, it's in an RC zone. Overlay is Great Pond. It's 7,200 square feet, the lot. It's on a public road. Existing is 18.2 for structures and 22.7 for everything. Proposed is 22.1 over 26.8. If I'm correct, once again, the height, 26.3. A letter check it for me. It is sewed. Uh, we do have a comp sheet, which I would like back. When I can get it. And, um, it's a 240-10-2A, 240-11-3A. I think that's about all I have.
Lot size is 7,200 square feet. What's proposed is adequate for the size, suitable, no impact on traffic, no impact on neighborhood visual character. What's proposed is a substantial improvement, uh, no impact on affordable housing. No opposition at the hearing, no opposition, uh, letters submitted. Any other findings? Conditions?
Per plan, per revised plan.
Per revised plans, yes. Let's make sure we get the proper plan incorporated into the decision.
Yeah. All town boards. No other structures?
Structures, uh, only because of the location, tight neighborhood, uh, just work with the police, if they need to come up with a traffic plan to deal with construction equipment. Town referrals, standard hours of work.
Did you say no other structures?
No additional structures or lot coverage without coming back, because it's, they have to modify the special permit. That includes sheds.
The shed is still on there.
If you want to expand the shed, you have to come back.
Oh, okay, okay.
Where I was going.
We have a finding, shed is to remain. Anything else? Or any conditions we're forgetting? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You don't require that, do you?
Opposed?
Let's put it in here.
That's a vote. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much. Have a wonderful night.
All right. Moving on to new hearings, we have number 100 dash 23, Gray Gables Realty LLC, 66 Shore Street, Falmouth, requesting a special permit to remove the existing detached garage and construct an addition to the rear of the existing structure resulting in a new duplex.
We have an application, 100 dash 23, Gray Gables Realty LLC, 44 Route 28A, Bacasset, Mass. Applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-10-2A, the Code of Falmouth, to remove the existing detached garage and construct, and construct in addition to the rear of the existing structure resulting in a new duplex. The subject property is 66 Shore Street in Falmouth. And let's see what we have from town departments. From the assessors, we have no comment. Water. The, the current home is fed by a 3/4 inch copper service line from 1938. A duplex will require the existing water service line to be upgraded to a 1-inch to feed one unit and a new 1-inch water service line to feed the second unit. Board of Health. Health has yet to receive a septic system permit and application for the proposed septic system. That doesn't appear to be a reason that health would have an, would have an, if, an issue with this project, though. Planning, no comment. Engineering. Number one, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Shore Street is a public right-of-way in this area. The proposed new driveway will require filing a permit with the engineering division. Number two, we request that the board either require the applicant to obtain an approved driveway permit from the engineering division prior to the closing, prior to closing the hearing for the special permit, or that the board include the following condition if the special permit is improved. Quotations, the applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to the start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the driveway permit. And to quote, note that additional information will be required to obtain the driveway permit. Three, any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Four, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property abutters or public rights-of-way. Five, we recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of drywells, rain garden, or any other stormwater infiltration measures or stormwater harvesting measures, such as rain barrels for the new roof area at a minimum. Six, we have only one address in our system for this lot. Based on current address policy, the front unit will be 66 Shore Street, Apartment A, and the rear unit will be 66 Shore Street, Apartment B. We will assign the addresses upon application for a building permit. Please consider the above addresses draft for planning and paperwork. Seven, we recommend the following condition be included in any approval. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence while the fixing legible numbers required, time limit, there is a time limit for compliance. Number eight, where this site slopes down to the street, we request that erosion and sediment, sediment controls are included for this project to, to protect the town's downstream stormwater system. We recommend that the plans be revised to include a demarcated limit of, limit of work and include proposed erosion and sediment controls in a construction entrance. We recommend the following condition be included in any approval. Construction of this project shall follow the town's soil, soil immersion and sediment control standard conditions. Document can be found on the engineering division's page of the town's website. Where the drive, where a driveway permit is required for this project, DPW Engineering will oversee the erosion controls as part of the permit. And we have Concom, no comment. And that's what I have from town boards.
For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening. For the record, Kevin Klower. I am before you tonight representing Jim and Karen Halliday, the managers of Gray Gables Realty LLC. They're the owners of 66 Shore Street. I'm joined tonight by their son, Jimmy Halliday, as well as the architect Greg Sarunian from ResCom, and the engineer Zach Posensky from Bracken Engineering. We are seeking permission to alter the existing non-conforming dwelling on this property. 66 Shore Street is located at the northern end of Shore Street, just a short distance from here. The lot's 12,075 square feet, and it's in a general resident, residence zoning district. Presently, there's a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling with detached garage. The footprint is 1,948 square feet. It was previously a duplex, which is why it's labeled as an existing two-family. It's used presently as a single-family. Uh, as it exists, there's a number of non-conformities. There's a detached garage, which has a side yard setback of 8.8 feet where 10 is required, uh, rear yard setback of .3 feet where 10 is required, and the dwelling has a front yard setback of 19.4 feet where 25 is required. This building was built in approximately 1920. As I noted, it is located in a general residence district, which allows for duplexes by right. The applicant is proposing to raise and eliminate the detached garage and to create an addition to the existing structure at the rear of the lot to recreate a new duplex. The proposed plans will eliminate the detached garage, thereby eliminating the non-conforming side yard and rear yard setbacks. The only remaining non-conformity, the front yard setback, is unaffected. Otherwise, it's entirely conforming to setbacks and lot coverage requirements. There is an increase in the bedroom count from four to seven, however, the applicants are installing a new Title V system to replace the existing cesspool. The proposed ridge will remain the same as at present, which is 31 feet 10 inches. Despite all the improvements, it still requires a special permit under section 240-10.2A. Under that section, pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. And the board is asked to consider the standards of 240-12.1E and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional non-conformities, impairies views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. Here, there's no new non-conformity created. The existing non-conforming setbacks are, uh, to the garage are eliminated. Otherwise conforms to all setback and lot coverage requirements. The lot coverage by structure is 20%. Lot coverage by structures, paving and parking is at 43.5%, which is below the 50% allowed in the GR district. There's no impact of views and vistas. The addition is to the rear of the structure, and it does reasonably conform to the neighborhood. As I noted, duplexes are by right in this district, and there are many similar nearby properties. This project represents a significant improvement over the existing conditions. It's a revitalization of a historic property. The existing non-conforming side yard and rear yard setback are eliminated. Side yard setback will be go from 8.8 feet to 21.1. Rear, rear yard will go from .3 feet to 22.1. There's no adverse effects, and certainly none that would overbalance the benefits that we've outlined. There's nothing about this proposal that is substantially more detrimental than what exists. I believe that this meets all the requirements of 240-10.2A and 240-12.1E, and I'd be happy to address any questions that the board might have at this time.
Questions from the board? Jerry, start with you.
The DPW comments are pretty standard as far as storm. Have you submitted anything to them for approval based on what your applicant wants to do?
No, but, no, so that'll, that'll have to be done as part of getting the building permit. Uh, we'll have, we'll have to satisfy, because you have to get the driveway permit in order to get the building permit, and we'll have to meet all of DPW's requirements in order to do that.
Including stormwater?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Frank?
Mr. Klower, is, there're gonna be two driveways, one on either side of the house?
Yes.
And no garage, so there'll be outdoor parking?
Correct. Is that it?
That's it.
Oh, nothing other than, what a substantial improvement to what's there. I mean, it's gonna put some smiles on the neighbors' faces, I'm sure. Not that the thing's exceedingly ugly now, but, uh...
We are, we are going historic, um, beginning of February.
Nice. Very nice.
That was gonna be my question. You are applying with historic?
Yes, we've, we've, applications have been submitted, and we'll, we'll be on the February hearing.
Okay. And, and have you applied with the health to get rid of the cesspool?
Uh, no, we have not submitted the bill, the septic application yet.
Can we condition?
Of course. I mean, we wouldn't, we, we can't do it without it.
Go without it, okay.
Whether you conditioned it or not, it's condition.
I just didn't know why you hadn't done it yet, that's all.
Uh, I mean, it's just part of the building permit process.
That's all I have, this is a great project, again.
I have no questions. Just waiting for the, one of the nicest parts of the town comment, but...
Yeah.
It's a new year.
Well, it will be when it...
New, new, me, new year.
It will be.
It will be when the house is done.
Yeah, right.
Public comment? How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
Motion to close. Mark, second by Suzanne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion approved of the conditions.
Suzanne, second. Mr. Fennerin, findings?
Findings, uh, we're in a GR zone. No overlay, no flood. Uh, there was one previous decision in, uh, in 16. The lot size is 12,075. Uh, right now, existing is 16.1 structure and 31.9 with everything, and proposed is 20, uh, over 43.5. What else do I have? 240-10-2A, no letters. That's about all I have, no public. That's all I have.
Testimony is there's an existing septic cesspool that will be abandoned or otherwise removed, and a new seven-bedroom septic will be added.
And they're seeing historical in February?
Yep. Testimony will be, uh, excuse me, raise, uh, the existing non-conforming detached garage. There'll be two driveways. We talked about no opposition. Any other findings? Not more detrimental.
It'll, it'll actually eliminate.
In keeping with the neighborhood, it may be significant, yeah, the, the non-conformities will be reduced or eliminated, uh, keeping with the neighborhood. The additions will be a substantial improvement to the property. Conditions?
The plans? Per departments?
Yep. Water service must be upgraded.
Right. Twice.
New numbering, numbers of the units, comply with any referrals from the Historical Commission, Board of Health, et cetera. Hours of work, work with the police department if they need to come up with a traffic plan, if that becomes an issue, they can't keep vehicles all on-site, tight neighborhood.
No other structures?
Yep, no other structures. Anything else? Jerry, Frank, any other conditions?
No, I'm finished.
Nora? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's a vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Next up, we have number 104 dash 23, O'Brien, 63 Bayside Drive, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming dwelling exceeding 20% lot coverage by structure.
Okay, we have Michael and Crystal O'Brien, 8 Saddle Ridge Way in Offlock, Mass. Applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-10-2A4 and 240-11-3A4, the Code of Falmouth, to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming dwelling exceeding 20%. The subject property is 63 Bayside Drive in East Falmouth. And from town departments, Fi Department has no issues. Assessors have no comment. Conservation has no comment. Water. The current service line is 1 inch PE from 1975. The new service line is proposed in a new location. This will require an application for a new water service line in the proposed location along with associated fees. The current service may be used if a revised site plan is submitted. The current service may be used if a revised site plan is submitted. Homeowner must call the Falmouth DPW to have the meter removed before any demo work will Board of Health, no comment. They're proposing a new four-bedroom septic. And engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights-of-way and public utilities. Bayside Drive is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way will require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or abudders or public rights-of-way. Four, this plan does not appear to be complete. Number one, the proposed driveway does not connect to the existing driveway or the roadway surface. Two, will any portion of the existing driveway be removed? Three, the stone walk does not line up with the new entry. Will it be removed or relocated? Four, there isn't any room to park a car in front of the proposed garage without protruding into the public right-of-way. And five, note that the required five-foot setback between the driveway and the abutting property doesn't appear to be provided. Yeah, I think there's another page. Five, we recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of drywells, rain garden, or any other stormwater infiltration measures or stormwater harvesting measures such as rain barrels for the new roof area at a minimum. Six, we recommend the following condition be included on any approval. Quotations, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence, affixing legible numbers required. Seven, where this is a small site, the work done, the work close to abutting properties and the public right-of-way, we request that erosion and sediment controls are included for this project to protect the town's downstream stormwater system and abutting properties. We recommend that the plans be revised to include a demarcated limit of work and include proposed erosion and sediment controls, including but not limited to erosion controls across the front of the site and a construction entrance. We recommend the following condition be included in any approval. Construction of this project shall follow the town's soil, erosion, and sediment control standard conditions. Document can be found on the Engineering Division's page of the town's website. References to the Department of Public Works Engineering Division shall be replaced with the zoning board of appeals. Who would be the permitting authority for this project? That was engineering. Planning has no comment. And that one. A comp sheet is here, and no letters. And no letters.
For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening again. For the record, Kevin Clower, I'm before you, representing Mike and Crystal O'Brien, the owners of sixty-three Bayside Drive. They are seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing dwelling on the site. Before I go much further, I just want to note, we received the engineering referral on Tuesday, so I was able to get a revised plan at about four-thirty this afternoon. I brought copies with me. I'm happy to submit it to the board, understanding that might require a continuation, but we responded to that as quickly as we possibly could. So... I didn't have a chance to make a pulse.
Thanks. I can just stand by, right?
So sixty-three Bayside is located at approximately the midpoint of the Seacoast Peninsula. The lot is seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-two square feet. It's located in the residential C zoning district, and it's not in a flood site. Presently, it's a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling shed with footprint of about thirteen hundred square feet, seventeen percent lot coverage. It's nonconforming to front yard setback at eight point five feet where twenty-five is otherwise required. The existing house was built in nineteen fifty-nine. It's dated both aesthetically and structurally, both the interior and the exterior. There has not been a lot in the way of renovations over the last sixty-five years. So the applicant is proposing to raise the existing dwelling and shed and build a new four-bedroom home with a new Title V system, designed for four, the same as the existing four bedrooms. The proposed home has a ridge height of twenty-six feet, eight inches. It includes a garage and eliminates the shed in order to reduce congestion on the lot. The footprint is slightly larger, it's six hundred square feet larger. The lot coverage by structure is resulting at twenty-four point eight-six percent. The front yard setback is slightly improved to nine and a half feet. Otherwise, it complies with side yard and rear yard setbacks, as well as lot coverage by structure, paving and parking at thirty-one point three percent. This does require a special permit under both Sections 240-10.2A and Sections 240-11.3A4. Under 10.2A, pre-existing nonconforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. The board's asked to consider the standards of 240-12.1E and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities, impairies views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. Here, there's no new nonconformity created, and to avoid reputation, I'm going to look at the requirements of 240-11.3A4, which states that in a residential C zoning district, lot coverage by structure may exceed twenty percent by special permit. And under that, the board's asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, the effect of shadow, the impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal impoundments. In preparing the lot comparison worksheet, the house appears to be and will be among the larger in the area. However, as we've talked about a number of times, Seacoast Shores is a rapidly changing neighborhood, contains both homes that are both modest in size and also very substantial. Proposal is very much in line with other newly constructed and approved homes in this neighborhood. Should be little impact of shadowing on views and vistas from the public way, and it's an improvement over the existing conditions on the site. As I noted, we only received the engineering referral on Tuesday of this week, so we did revise the plans accordingly to show the driveway connection. The engineer wasn't sure if he could show work on the town layout, but he's done so for us. The driveway's removed to at least five feet off the property line. The plan does include drywells, and it does note the removal of the existing walkway and existing stone driveway. The applicant's proposal is relatively modest in scope, especially considering that they could shrink the footprint minimally and propose a much larger home vertically by right with a greater impact on nearby properties. There's no adverse effects to this, and it remains in character with the neighborhood in both size and scope. It meets the requirements of 1040-10.2A, 240-10.2A, 240-11.3A4, and 240-12.1E. Given that, I'd be happy to address your questions, but I believe the board can and should grant a special permit for this.
I don't even remember. The board is going to be looking for a continuance due to the latest plans submitted. Are people satisfied?
No. I think it's much of a muchness because the way the road layout doesn't really comply with the, the road itself doesn't comply with the road layout. I mean, it's, the reality is that the house that exists now is like twenty-seven feet from the edge of the pavement, so I just don't see any need to hem him up with anything like that because it's...
I'm okay with it too, but I would like, Mr. Clower, to show us exactly what the revisions are visually.
Sure.
Because I'm not quite sure what you've done.
So let me pull up the old plan, because I have that here as well. So what they were noting was, on the old plan, with the proposed driveway, didn't show a connection to the edge of pavement. So on the proposed plan, that's been added. The proposed driveway has also been moved to be at least five feet from the edge of, from the property line, as was requested. The drywell has, drywells have been added here and here, and they've noted specifically that the existing driveway and the existing stone walkway to be removed. There were no other real changes to the plan.
That was going to be the plan anyway, essentially.
Yeah.
I mean, it's nothing in my mind.
I think the engineering department was saying it wasn't clear that the stone walkway was being removed. I think part of that is it was printed in black and white as opposed to color, because on the color, you can see that the area in red is clearly to be removed, so it was more of just a, I don't want to call it miscommunication, but a question relative to that. So we did address that as quickly as we could.
Specific board questions. Jerry?
And this might be picky. I noticed the date in both proposed site plans, nine twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three.
Sure, but if you look in the revision block section, the most recent revision is one four twenty-four.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Frank?
Mr. Clower, on the revised plan that you just gave us, and also on the original plan, if you look on the, I think it's the east, or the, looking at the plan on the left.
Mm-hmm.
It's east, yeah. You have a very faint line that starts at the back and comes kind of, not on a straight line, but makes meanders along the...
This line here?
What is that?
It's labeled as arborvitie, so I think it's just an, you know, edge of clearing.
Because I, okay, thank you, because I, when I was out there, I had some confusion with the staking. Not that it wasn't staked, but there's a stake out there that says edge of porch, which looks to me like it's awfully close because of the lot line, but this plan says it's got ten feet, two inches of, or ten point two feet of clearance, but when I was out there, I couldn't see it. I don't know if you've been out there to take a look.
I have not been out there since it's been staked, but I spoke with the applicant last week to confirm it was staked, but I usually visit sites when I'm putting together the application.
I agree with Mr. Fineran that this whole situation is a little messy because the street...
Doesn't match the layout.
Doesn't match anywhere near the layout of the road. In fact, you can't even, it's much different than anywhere else.
Yeah.
Well, it's common in a lot of places, but this is just the most extreme case that I can recollect.
So you can assure us then that the building is at least ten feet from the sideline and the porch is ten feet from the sideline?
I mean, you can certainly and should condition this decision to be per plan.
Well, we will, but I just would like to, I had some confusion out there.
That is my understanding, Mr. Vio.
And I wanted to just ask you about it.
Yep. We wouldn't be proposing something that creates a new nonconformity.
I know you wouldn't, but, you know, when you go out there visually and take a look, sometimes questions come up that you can't answer. Thank you.
Mark?
No, just what I mentioned, and I mean, I paced it off. I mean, the actual house now, it's like twenty-seven feet from the edge of the road, so the whole, you know, it's...
Normally, we have, you know, a forty-foot or fifty-foot road layout, and the road tends to be somewhere in the middle. Sometimes it skews to one side or the other, though.
Often on these peninsulas, but never that much that I've ever seen.
Especially, I mean, this peninsula in particular, where it was, a lot of them were dirt roads or still are dirt roads.
They benefit from it. You get to use some town land for free.
Do you need a license for that driveway and the layout?
Well, I mean, almost every driveway you have has a connection to the road in the town layout, and they don't require a driveway for that. They typically require, driveway, they typically, they don't require a license for that. They typically require a license for any structures or anything of that nature. Cobblestone paving, they oftentimes require a license, but for just a general driveway connection, the town hasn't historically required that.
Suzanne?
I'm all set.
Mr. Clower, I'm just looking at the lot comparison. Just want to make sure I've gone through this properly. You're existing at seventeen percent. You're proposing going to twenty-four point eight-six?
Yes.
And the total footprint is thirteen eleven point nine, and you're going to twenty-four twenty point one?
I thought I submitted a revised one, and if not, that's, I brought a revised one. What happened was, when I initially did it, I took the lot coverage by structure, paving and parking, not just twenty-four point...
It's nineteen nineteen seven, that's the revised plan?
Yeah, that's what's reflected here. Oops.
The reason I was raising some eyebrows, based in your calculations, you were going to have the largest house in the neighborhood, and that was a little troubling for me.
Yeah, so this is, at nineteen nineteen point seven, it's twenty-four point eight-six.
That puts you in the top tier, but it's a little more acceptable.
Well, it's also, I think it's, you know, it's tough when we look at neighborhoods because Seacoast itself is changing. I actually took a quick look at some of the recently approved houses. So at seventy-two Woodside, you've got twenty-four point three percent lot coverage, gross floor area of, you know, footprint of nineteen twelve, gross floor area of twenty-two ninety, one eighty-two edge water, which we approved last year, it's twenty-four and a half percent lot coverage, footprint of three thousand, fifty feet spray, we have twenty-two percent lot coverage, footprint of seventeen hundred and eighty-six, two oh five edge water, lot coverage of twenty-two percent, footprint of nineteen sixty-four. Eleven Plymouth Avenue, which is just actually on the lot comparison worksheet, that's twenty-two point three percent, footprint of eighteen hundred and twenty-four. So, you know, with, even if it's not within a street or two, that general area has had a lot of recently approved or constructed houses that are very similar.
The question I've got is that one of the criteria that's in the zoning code is effects on affordable housing. This is clearly a neighborhood that was very modest in affordable houses, that every time we approve a project like this going up out to almost maximum amounts, it takes the amount of houses that could be affordable off the market and puts them into things that...
Understood, but...
Starter homes that most people will not be able to get for younger people.
But I also think when we talk about effects on affordable housing, it's talking about the effect of the, on the subsidized housing inventory, not necessarily the value of a significant...
But modest price, market rate units, I think, are important to make sure that there is...
I don't disagree, but, you know, it's the push and pull that we face.
The brunt of the attention of that is on the other side of it anyway. And then as far as the lot coverage, because of the discrepancy in the road layout, it's really going to mute it, because the front yard is going to be much larger than it appears on the... I don't have any problem with it.
I'm not opposed, but I'm going to ask the question.
No, I understand, and that's the best answer I have.
Public comment. Unless the board has any follow-ups. Public comment. Seeing none. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
Motion to close. We have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing is closed. No additional testimony will be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion approved with conditions.
Mark, second, to Suzanne. Sorry, Frank, she beat you to the punch.
All right.
Findings?
Findings, it's in an RC zone, overlay of Coit Bay. No flood zone. Lot size is seventy-seven twenty-two. It's on a public road. Now, I just heard you all. I have existing seventeen structures over nineteen point nine, proposed twenty-four point eight over thirty-one point three. And you can get me here, Kevin. Is the height twenty-six point eight? I might be right for the first time on the height tonight.
Twenty-six feet, eight inches.
Wow. It's a new year. It's a new year. Okay, there's going to be a new septic. We have a comp sheet.
Revised comp sheet.
Revised comp sheet. Data one one twenty-four.
Just make a specific note that the footprint is nineteen nineteen point seven, which is significantly lower than was originally proposed. Sorry, did I miss?
Nope. Nineteen point seven. Okay. What else do we have for findings?
No letters.
No letters.
No public.
Shed and the gravel on the plans, testimony in the plan that it will be removed. New four-bedroom septic. Significant improvement.
Yeah.
Any additional findings?
Nope.
Conditions?
Um...
For revised plans of one four twenty-four.
The application for the water, what did that say?
Incorporate all...
Yeah, all town departments.
Town referrals.
Yeah.
The conditions. Traffic plan with a PD if necessary.
No other structures. Fine.
Snap that one out for revised lot coverage. Any additional conditions? Jerry, Frank, Mark?
Nope.
Irene?
I'm just looking to see if Engineering had requested some additional information, I think.
They did have some questions.
Well, I think he gave us the revised plan that kind of cleaned that up.
Had to deal with a lot of them.
The limit of work would be, you know, we can condition that necessary to get the driveway permits.
It's part of the conditions, containing driveway permits.
Yeah.
Anything else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approved. No one is opposed, that's an approval. Thank you, Mr. Clower.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. I've got to tell you, I don't hate these six o'clock darts.
Not at all. No. It's a good thing.
We agree.
Might be a habit.
All right. That concludes new hearings. Getting back to open meeting, we've already voted the minutes of November thirtieth and December the seventh, tabling the fourteenth and twenty-first. Next up, we have one eighteen eighteen, Blue Flag Development LLC, eight thirty-six Palmer Avenue, review of condition number four with a vote anticipated.
Chairman?
Yes.
This is a matter that I worked on as town council, so I have been recusing myself from anything that I worked on in a prior capacity, but it leaves the board with only four people, so...
So for the applicant, we have our associate mem, one of our associate members is not able to join us, and one of our full-voting members is not here this evening, so we have four members remaining who can vote on this. You would need the unanimous, all four votes. We're happy to give a continuation, do it on a night, short date, if you're not comfortable proceeding with this number of board members.
I think we can proceed. It's an annual update, so I think, happy to proceed at this point. My name is Daniel Johnston. I'm an attorney at Nutter, McLean, and Fish on behalf of Auto Camp here today. Auto Camp here today. Rich Cleve is with me, he's the senior director of operations, facilities and maintenance. Jan Bloom, the general manager, was going to be here, but he fell ill, so he sends his apologies. Today, we're here regarding special permanent 118-18. The public hearing for this special permit was back in March of 2019. We last updated the board on November 3rd, 2022. The scope of this meeting is about condition number four and the special permit itself, and really whether to require overnight staffing when occupancy is below 30 percent. The main concern, as we've discussed at the last meeting, the main concern that the board had originally was that the airstreams could be used as affordable housing during winter months and emergencies at night with no staff present. As an update, again, Auto Camp has decided to have one staff member at least at the property at all times regardless of occupancy level. Generally speaking, there's two to 30 staff members at the property on average. Like we mentioned last, last year, the winter months have the least occupancy numbers, but again, Auto Camp has decided to have one staff member at the property. And there's been no issues with guests using the airstreams as affordable housing. So not much has changed over the year as far as staffing is concerned. In Auto Camp, both this year as well as last year, has continued to decide to have one staff member at the property at all times. Considering this, we would like to request a change to the special permit, condition three and four, to require that instead of having the flexibility for occupancy levels and staffing, to simply require that regardless of occupancy level, onsite management will be present at the property 24 hours a day when the premises is open for business. So we officially request that three and four be amended as, as mentioned in the letter.
So I don't believe that we're properly noticed for that this evening, so that's going to require coming back for a hearing.
We can do that. But that's, that's all, I'm happy to take questions.
I guess I'm going to, if I could start up to you, Noreen, has there been any request for zoning enforcement against any violation or problems with the, the special permit?
Uh, no, we have had input from a couple of the town departments, but nothing relating to zoning enforcement.
Can we have the input, please?
Pardon?
Could we have the input, please?
Sure. Conservation, existing conservation issues on the property are being addressed under open permits. Fire department reports that they have had a couple of responses, but not had any specific complaints otherwise. Police department shows no complaints per their database. And Board of Health notes that they have completed the leach field replacement or, and are in process of installing the enhanced nitrogen removal system. They have been, in the meanwhile, hauling their septic for the past year and will continue to have no discharge until the entire system is complete. They hope to have that completed over the next few months.
Questions from the board, Suzanne.
I just want them to be in compliance with the Board of Health, it seems it's been taking forever.
Just, for the purposes of refreshing the board's memory as to condition four, I believe this just concerns the operational plan that we've, that we require them to come back annually?
So condition four, you gave an expiration date for the operation plan, the purpose for that was for reviewing the occupancy data in conjunction with the sufficiency of operations plans and site management. So I guess I would assert to you that where they have assured you that there'll be at least one staff member on site 24/7, which I think was the board's concern at that time, they would be in compliance with that.
So my recollection, based on the previous, last time this came up, was there were significant concerns from a butters regarding noise concerning that if somebody wasn't there, that complaints would go unaddressed and that it would be impacting significantly on a butters. So glad to hear that there have been no follow-up complaints, at least to zoning enforcement and the police or otherwise. Mark, do you have any specific questions?
No, just a comment, I think that one staff person there is certainly described as proactive and I think it's a plus and a good measure. I, this should be even commended.
I mean, it wouldn't specifically not picking on them for, you know, asking for a change or correction to the permit, but I don't think you necessarily need to do that where we had said that, you know, we were looking at coverage based on occupancy and they've obviously stepped up that request and guaranteed you that they're going to have at least one person on site 24/7. So they're exceeding the minimum that you required.
Absolutely.
So I don't think that you would need to necessarily change your permit to reflect that.
I agree with that.
Makes sense. It would be nice if they're going to do it, we would keep it that way.
It'll come up in the annual report every year, correct?
I, I think I'd leave that up to the board. You know, I think the purpose initially was they didn't have any data regarding their stays, so there was the question about whether there were complaints, et cetera. And as of the last hearing, we don't have any new complaints from a butters about any ongoing issues.
Why would, why would we make any effort to discourage the offer that he's making? I, like I said, I think it amounts to a plus and kind of like a proactive thing, there's nothing like having a warm body there. It's potentially going to eliminate calls and concerns.
Right, well, so you do have zoning enforcement where as if there's any ongoing problems, you wouldn't want to wait a year right before there's some action taken. So I guess I would assure you that you have that option.
He's offering.
Well, we could, we can't change the special condition.
Without a hearing.
So that, we could accept this and leave it up to the applicant if he wants to.
The limited question four is to whether or not we want to invite them back in a year or.
Hey, that sounds good.
Whether or not we want to just say that we reserve the right to recall them if there are problems with zoning enforcement. So what's the board's appetite? Do we want an annual report or do you want?
Keep it up for a year until they're in compliance with Board of Health, that's what I think.
It's not unreasonable. Someone like to make a motion?
Oh, make a motion that they, we do a one-year, is it called a probation type?
No.
What's it called?
Request an annual report.
Question, annual report, one year.
Come back a year to check in and tell us that your Board of Health is all squared away.
Rome is done.
Sounds good.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We'll see in a year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, we have discussion relating to the use of special town council for the Southernly LLC at 0 and 375 Sandwich Road, East Falmouth, with a vote anticipated.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Since we have two members missing in one, the vice chair, is there any consideration that we should delay this or this is important enough, we have enough?
Problem that we face is that, there's two parts. One is selection of a special town council to assist us with this project. And just for the purpose of the public, we will not be discussing the merits of the case, we are just possibly choosing a special town council this evening.
I think the answer is we'll continue.
Uh, no, the, the problem is, is that we also have an issue that we need to get funding and that needs to be accomplished at the request of the FinCom who is meeting in a, 10 days, a week?
Yeah.
So time is of the essence.
I misspoke, I meant we'll continue tonight with the selection of a special town council.
Continue on, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, we waited long enough.
All right. I believe the administrator did circulate some bio-sheets on four different attorneys. Has everyone a chance to review them?
Yes.
Yes.
Jerry, do you have a question?
An overall question, we can do this later. Is special councils written legal opinion to us, open to the public?
No.
Or do we, so, okay, it's like we treat it as our?
They are special counsel to us, but they can render an opinion that is private to the board unless the board wants to release the opinion.
Okay.
It's just the same as if we're requesting town council to give an opinion to the board.
Just want to make sure.
It's the board's purview then to release the, that particular opinion to the public or to even private.
But all meetings of the special council will be open? We'll comply with the open meeting law?
Yes, we comply with the open meeting law. So if we have an executive session, they would be closed until such time as the event was over and then the minutes have to be released eventually.
Thank you.
It has to comply with open meeting. Has everyone had opportunity to review the?
Yes.
Yes.
Some discussion or have people have feelings on our people?
I personally, let's see now, I brought this up initially, I, I lean towards Copelman and Page for their experience and the fact that they got over 50 attorneys on staff. Over a third of the towns in the cities in the state of Massachusetts use them. They work for all but three of the towns on the Cape, and they are full-time counsel for eight of the 15, I think. I just think the experience just outweighs all other factors and we're in a pinch and we need the best and I think these people who obviously come here tonight deserve the best. It's my opinion.
Frank?
I would recommend Paul Haverty. I know he's currently serving us under a contract from Mass Housing as a procedural attorney, but this would convert him into being a procedural and a substantive attorney. I'm familiar with him, he's a part-time resident of the town of Falmouth, but I'm also aware that he has worked for many years with Mark Babrowski, who was our special counsel in the Liberty Green case, who has basically wrote the book on 40Bs. The fact that Copelman and Page may have 50 attorneys is of no consequence to me, we're really looking only for the services of one or two, and he has, I think, all the connections we need. I have confidence in him and I would, that's my recommendation.
Jerry?
I agree with Frank and would add one other thing, I think, having Mr. Haverty serve as both makes it a lot more efficient for us in that if he's, is special counsel to us and also the procedural counsel to us, I think it, it could help speed things along. He's got a head start. A head, okay.
So I'm going to advocate, I don't disagree with any of the points that are made, I'm just going to put out there and advocate regarding Adam Costa. He's been before this board representing developers, he certainly knows the town, his office is up in Newburyport, and kind of looking through some of the recent hack decisions, he scored a significant win regarding a wastewater case, which could be somewhat beneficial. So I'll advocate for him, but Suzanne, I didn't mean to skip him, I apologize.
Definitely advocating for George Pucci from Copelman and Page. I have worked with him a few other times, we did one 400-unit project, he's done large projects like this. And I think he has enough time to catch up and be at the meeting in the end of January. I just know he does a great job and he's done a lot of 40Bs, I think the majority of his work is 40B.
We, regardless of everything that's been said about Haverty and Babrowski, when the rubber hit the road, we didn't get too far with them on Liberty Green, and again, I have to advocate for George Pucci and Copelman and Page. I, I just, and your experience with them, personal experience with them, makes me feel even stronger. And I mean, I researched this whole law firm issue and, and you know, did a town meeting article on it 10 years ago and, I mean, Copelman and Page just stuck out above head and shoulders, I'm going to say.
I think, I, I disagree and agree, Copelman Page, in my experience, has been general counsel, a town counsel to a number of communities, so they're, they're spread very wide. And I don't disrespect any of them or Mr. Pucci, I just think Mr. Haverty has a better handle on what we're going to do and I really think our issues are going to be more technical than pure legal. I mean, if you look at, we did discuss it, I think, Mr. Hill's firm, they came up with a win based on times when the board didn't listen to the technical consultant. That might be a minor point, but I think it's, I think Mr. Haverty has more than enough experience to handle this.
Well, if we do go with Mr. Pucci, we still get to retain Haverty.
Yeah, we have him anyway, so we got the best of both worlds that way.
I don't know if that's a plus, that's all I'm saying.
Well, if he's a plus.
I don't know.
How could he be a minus if we kept him on?
I, I don't know.
Your argument doesn't really, your two arguments don't mesh.
Well, I'll make a motion that we hire Paul, oh, I'm sorry, you didn't speak.
Well, I did.
You did.
Okay. I'm the lone guy going with.
I'll make a motion we hire Paul Haverty, or we engage Trini Haverty as a special counsel. I'll say it.
So discussion, Noreen, have you worked with either one of these attorneys?
So I spent 12 years working with the town of Weston prior to coming to Falmouth. The town of Weston use, they're now referred to as KP Law.
Yes.
As town council. The zoning board utilized KP Law's expertise for 40Bs, a couple of cell towers, that type of thing, so we did not have them present other than specialized occasions. That being said, KP Law had members of the firm that specialized, so for example, George Pucci's, 80% of his practice is 40B. So I guess what I would say to you is you're not going to go wrong with whomever you pick. I have personal experience with that firm.
Translated, if you had a vote, you'd vote for KMP?
I think it's out of order, I saw the question.
A question? No questions are out of order?
She's not a voting member.
Not a voting member, but I did ask for an opinion.
Yeah, no, I, I respect the opinion.
And I asked an opinion as well.
I don't respect the question.
All right.
I mean, you did have.
We had enough fireworks a few weeks ago with the board, it's a, let's not have any tonight.
You, you did have an attorney formerly from KP Law that did come and speak to the board on one of your Saturday workshops. It was an attorney that I worked with for many years from KP Law, so you know, that may also give you a flavor of their experience. A lot of quirk she needs.
So we have a motion and a second, we need a discussion, see what happens.
We call the vote?
Yeah. All those in favor of, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Neck.
Neck.
All right, so the motion fails, so we care to make another motion.
I motion we use KP Law.
Second. Discussion on that.
Did you just second it?
No, Suzanne, take it.
Oh, okay.
Is the record clear, Ash?
I thought we both did, actually.
I thought we both did, too, so I was trying to figure out who did.
Just want to make sure our minutes are going to be up to date on this. Discussion on this, so I would weigh in that obviously my pick is not going to, I won't get a second tonight, but I think that at this point KP would probably be a good choice in that we also have Mr. Haverty coming in as well, so.
I feel that all three of them are all, well, I don't know Mr. Murphy at all, but the three that have been nominated, I think are all capable. I'm willing to go along with the will of the board, but that's my comment right now. I have a preference, but I'm willing to go along with the will of the board.
I don't think we're going to go wrong with anyone that, any of the four choices, so.
They're all capable.
Any of the discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's a vote. Noreen, if you will reach out, and regarding this particular issue, are we on the FinCom's agenda?
We are.
Uh, board discussion.
Having none.
Having none, board updates?
Well, you got, you just filled my plate.
Hope everyone, as part of an update, had a nice holiday season. Future agenda items.
We got enough on our plate.
Don't disagree.
Coming a long winter.
All right.
Do you have anything for us?
The next scheduled public hearing will be January 18th, 2024, 6:00 PM, the Selectman's Meeting Room here at Town Hall. There are motion to adjourn this evening.
So moved.
Second. Suzanne, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you all.